In an effort to help Santa Clarita residents prepare for potential disasters, the city is encouraging the community to visit the Emergency Expo on Saturday, April 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at College of the Canyons. The annual Emergency Expo is the perfect opportunity for families and people of all ages to enhance emergency plans and disaster supplies while having fun.
Welcome back to City Hall, Election Central, where we are busy tabulating the results as they come in for the 2008 City of Santa Clarita Council Elections. And it's very exciting. It's a close race. And we now have all of the vote by mail ballots counted. And we also have the ballots from six of the precincts that have been added to that. So I'd like to share with you the new totals for the vote by mail and those six precincts. In first place is Lori Ender with 3,897 votes. In second place is Bob Keller with 3,790 votes. In third place is Bob Spear with 2,980 votes. In fourth place, we have Diane Troutman with 2,804 votes. And fifth place is Maria Gutzeit with 1,461 votes. And we will continue to update those again as that information comes in. And we see more ballots coming through the door now. So they will continue to be counted. And I will continue to update those until we get the final numbers. While that is taking place, I'd like to introduce Jason Crawford, who is in charge of Economic Development for the city. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having me on.
It's my pleasure. So what's going on in Economic Development?
There's always new stuff going on in Economic Development in Santa Clarita. We are definitely a growing market. One of the big things that we're working with right now is, of course, the Enterprise Zone, which is a great tax-saving program for businesses. There's really two ways that a business can save tax money: by hiring qualified employees or by making qualified purchases. So by doing either of those things, and we are working with all the businesses in the City of Santa Clarita to realize that savings that they can have. They can use that savings, which can be hundreds of thousands of dollars, to reinvest in their employees, to reinvest in training, to reinvest in their business to make it even more successful. So what we've really seen is businesses already taking advantage of it in just the past few months. And not only the ones that are here, but also businesses that are looking to expand or relocate are looking at Santa Clarita as a place to come. Which is, for us, very important because we know about half of our residents have to commute outside of Santa Clarita to work. So everything that we can do to bring those high-paying, high-quality jobs to Santa Clarita so that our residents don't have to sit on the five every morning, that's definitely part of our goal. Not only bringing them up to the industrial center, but bringing those jobs up across Santa Clarita so residents not only don't have to commute down to L.A., but they don't necessarily have to commute east and west throughout Santa Clarita.
Now, you put that little teaser out there. You have all these people at home saying, "How do I make more money? How do I get in on this Enterprise Zone?" What should these people do to find out more about how they can benefit?
The best thing to do is to go onto our website, santaclariterprison.com, or just straight to the santa-clarita.com. And there's a link there that'll take you to the Enterprise Zone. You'll find out all the information about how your business can take advantage of those benefits. And if you have other questions, you can call. There's phone numbers on the website. The number's 255-4347. We're happy to help any of the businesses find out the best way they can take advantage of all that tax savings.
That's great. You're natural for this, Jason. Hey, you're responsible not just for Economic Development, but I know you're also involved with making of films in Santa Clarita Valley. Why is it that filmmaking and television is so important to the city? And why is it that you'd care?
Well, film and TV, the entertainment industry, is one of our targeted clusters for a lot of reasons. There's a lot of people that live in Santa Clarita that work in that industry. So by being able to bring that industry here, we're getting them off the freeway. But also, they're high-paying jobs. They're really quality. In addition to the actual film studios that we're working with, location filming that just comes up. They film for a couple days. They spend a lot of money at the hotels putting their crew up, at restaurants buying food, at Home Depot and other hardware stores to buy the lumber, to build the sets. They come in, they spend a lot of money, and then they leave. And that money that comes into our economy creates wealth for Santa Clarita. It's not just us residents spending the same money over and over again. It's brand-new money coming into the economy. So that's a great thing for us. And so we specifically target film and TV. We have half a dozen TV shows that are based out here. Each of those have about 30, 35% of their crew that live in Santa Clarita. So it's definitely not only a really big economic engine, but honestly, it's a lot of fun. Everybody that I know watches TV or goes to a movie. They have a favorite show. They have a favorite movie. So being able to know that that TV show or that movie was filmed in Santa Clarita is a lot of fun. And you know, actually, we have a clip of some of the TV shows that have been based here in Santa Clarita. We go and we work with some of the actors. And they put together a little clip of how much they like to film here in Santa Clarita.
Great. I want to go to that in just a second. But before we do that, I know people are really hanging on every word of this interview. But there are a couple people that are interested in the election results still. So what I'd like to do is tell people that we now have all of the vote by mail ballots counted, as well as seven of the 32 precincts that have been counted. And in first place is Lori Ender with 3,959 votes. Second place is Bob Keller with 3,844 votes. In third place is Bob Spear with 3,002 votes. Fourth place is Diane Troutman with 2,852 votes. And fifth place is Maria Gutzeit with 1,489 votes. And as I promised, those will continue to be updated until we have the final totals. Jason, you just mentioned that we have a clip of all of the, or some of the shows that are filmed out here and some of the movies that are shown in the Santa Clarita Valley. So let's queue that up. And I think people will be surprised by all the activity that takes place here in Santa Clarita.
Hi, I'm Dennis Haysbrook from the unit.
Hey, it's Ricky Schroeder here.
Hey, Michael Irby from the unit.
Hi, I'm Jackie Chan.
All of us on Big Love.
We really appreciate you letting us shoot guns in your city.
I'm happy to be here at Santa Clarita.
I shoot in Santa Clarita.
I film in Santa Clarita.
We work here in Santa Clarita.
How about you?
Thank you. Love you all. Peace.
All right, Jason. It's from Jackie Chan back to Jason Crawford.
It's a tough act to beat.
Hey, there's a lot going on in Economic Development and film and tourism. What are some of the things we can look forward to in the upcoming months?
Well, in Economic Development, we work with film, with bringing in businesses, with events like the Tour California, the AT&amp;T Champions Classic, that bring in a lot of visitors that spend a lot of money. We work with sponsorship of those events. Ways that we can let our local businesses find inexpensive advertising and outreach by sponsoring some of those events. Another thing that we work on is retail attraction. And that's one of the things that I get the questions about most. In this year, the next 18 months, we'll have over a million square feet of brand-new retail in the City of Santa Clarita with the Plaza Golden Valley, which is going to be a great center that'll be opening up in phases starting this summer. The Westfield Valencia Town Center expansion, Bridgeport Marketplace. There's going to be a lot of new shopping and restaurant opportunities for residents over the next year that I think people will get a big kick out of.
You know, there's probably a lot of people at home listening and thinking, "Blah, blah, 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 blah. When's Nordstrom's coming? When's Nordstrom's coming?"
We're working on that. We have a list that we obviously want to see come here. We've heard from residents. Nordstrom, Cheesecake Factory, PF Chang's. We're working on this. Williams Sonoma. I think that we'll be seeing some of those coming into Westfield. And hopefully, they'll be able to sign those deals and make announcements in the next few months. Nordstrom's, it's a big ask. I think that we're a couple of years off from that, but it's definitely something that we're shooting for.
You know, just so that people know, a lot of how these companies make their decision is based on demographics. They simply look at how many people live in an area, what the median income is, and it either meets their model or not. But I do want people to know that Jason and his staff is doing everything they can to bring the retailers to the City of Santa Clarita that we've heard the people want. What I'd like to do is update the results here if I could. We now, as I mentioned before, have all the vote by mail votes counted. And we now have nine of the 32 precincts counted. In first place is Lori Ender with 4,043 votes. In second place is Bob Keller with 3,923 votes. In third place is Bob Spear with 3,092 votes. In fourth place, Diane Troutman, 2,992 votes. And fifth place is Maria Gutzeit with 1,614 votes. So with that, thank you very much, Jason.
Absolutely.
And we'll take a quick break and come back with updated results in just a minute. Thank you. Well, welcome back to Election Central here at Santa Clarita City Hall. Our election workers have been busy tabulating the results and doing a fantastic job. They have already tabulated all of the vote by mail results, as well as results of the 11 of 32 precincts which we have received so far. In first place is Lori Ender with 4,126 votes. In second place is Bob Keller with 3,995 votes. In third place is Bob Spear with 3,156 votes, followed by Diane Troutman with 3,080 votes, and Maria Gutzeit with 1,640 votes. And again, I will continue to update you as those results come in. I'm back with Gail Ortiz. And Gail, we've got a lot of events in the City of Santa Clarita. And I know one that is dear to your heart that's coming up soon is the Cowboy Festival. What's going on there this year?
Oh, a lot of good stuff, Ken. The Cowboy Festival is probably my favorite time of year. Number one, it's springtime in Santa Clarita, which is always great. The hills are green. And Melody Ranch is probably my very favorite place to be in Santa Clarita. And the Movie Ranch is open to the public just on that weekend only. You can't normally get into Melody Ranch because it's a private working movie ranch. But on Cowboy Weekend, you can go to Melody Ranch. For a single ticket price of $15, you can enjoy an array of cowboy entertainment. We have cowboy comedians. We have cowboy entertainers. We have the amazing balladeer, Don Edwards. And the best peach cobbler ever. And it is a fun, fun weekend. If you've never been, even if you're not into the cowboy genre, Melody Ranch is an awesome place to go to visit, to see. It's where Gunsmoke was filmed. It's where a whole lot of westerns were filmed. I think we have on the screen right now some pictures of the Cowboy Festival. We bring in the likes of a blacksmith to show you what that looks like. You can walk around the ranch and really enjoy the best western entertainment there is. And it's a fabulous weekend. Bring the kids. Tickets are available. Cowboyfestival.org is our website if you want to check that out. And you can buy tickets online. It's a great weekend. A lot of fun. And I cannot stress that peach cobbler. It is just awesome.
You know, over the years, I have all but twisted people's arms to go to the Cowboy Festival. And I can tell you, I have told so many people who have zero interest in anything that has to do with cowboys or horses, they say they hate country western music. And I say, "Hey, just go. Give it a chance." And without exception, they've come back and said, "Boy, that was great. I had a great time."
Oh, it is. You really feel like you're transformed to, you know, transported to the 1800s with the wooden sidewalks. And the movies, you know, they've built facades over the years that exist on the property today. And we actually bring in vendors from all over the country. And they move into the little storefronts there so you can buy, you know, your belt buckles and your jewelry and your cowboy tack, all that stuff. And it's just, it's fun. Really. It's a different kind of event. It's very Santa Clarita. This is our 15th year, as you well know, Ken. A little bit of history on this. Ken Poleskamp went to the Cowboy Event in Elko, Nevada, and had such a good time and said, "Gosh, we should do something like that here in Santa Clarita." And indeed, we thought so too. And we put one together, put an event together. And the year was 1994, and it was the year of the Northridge earthquake, which Santa Clarita was the third worst-hit city of all the cities that were impacted by the earthquake. And we originally were going to be at the Hart Auditorium. And the Hart Auditorium was destroyed. And so we were scrambling, "Do we do this event? Do we not do this event?" And Melody Ranch came up and said, "You know, hey, we'd love to host this for you." It's a little bit difficult because we have to park folks at one site and transport them to the ranch. We can't have people driving to the ranch. But, boy, what a unique and fun event. And it's the last weekend in April. If you're interested, again, go to cowboyfestival.org. You can purchase tickets there. You can get a little bit more information about who's going to be performing. And I think it's definitely worth your time. I don't think you'll regret going. So that's the Cowboy Festival.
What else we got going on?
What else we got? We always got something going on in Santa Clarita. We've got our Emergency Preparities Expo coming up in April. And that is a very important event here in Santa Clarita. I mentioned a minute ago the Northridge earthquake. Santa Clarita is not lacking in emergencies. We've had fires. We've had flooding. We've had earthquakes, a couple of them. And being prepared is very important. As a city, I know, Ken, you have spent a lot of time and energy, and the city's spent a great deal of money, of getting citizens ready, getting our community ready, getting our roads ready, shoring up hillsides. A lot of things that we do here. But getting people ready is probably one of the most important things we do. And that's what the Emergency Expo is all about. And you're looking at pictures now of past events. We've done this event for a while now. This one that we're doing for 2008 is going to be on April 10th. I'm sorry, April 19th. From 10:00 to 2:00. That's April 19th. That's a Saturday. From 10:00 to 2:00 at College of the Canyons. And your kids will enjoy it. They can come out and see the fire trucks and the emergency equipment. The shaky-quaky thing is out there where they can experience an earthquake because they're probably too young to have been in a Northridge one. And a lot of good info. A lot of good vendors are there. And I think it's definitely worth your time as a family to come on out to COC that day and check it out.
The shaky-quaky thing. I'm sure that's a technical term.
Shaky-quaky.
I wanted to talk a little bit about a couple of events that have recently been held in Santa Clarita. But before, I do want to update the public once again with the latest election results. With all of the vote by mail ballots counted and 15 of the 32 precincts counted, in first place is Lori Ender with 4,327 votes. In second place is Bob Keller with 4,181 votes. Third is Bob Spear with 3,333. Fourth is Diane Troutman with 3,287. And next is Maria Gutzeit with 1,767 votes. You know, I wanted to mention that we have just had a couple of very successful events in Santa Clarita. The Amgen Bike Race and the AT&amp;T Golf Classic. Let me start with the Amgen Bike Race. This is a race that starts all the way up in Northern California, actually in San Francisco. Goes up to Santa Rosa and comes down through the state, through Santa Barbara, and into Santa Clarita. And this year, it finished in Pasadena. And thousands and thousands of people line this entire route and watch the best bike riders in the entire planet.
They really are. It's amazing.
Those guys are amazing. In fact, now, this is the third-largest bike race in the entire world.
It's amazing. It's grown.
The Tour de France is still number one, but we're gaining on them. And this is widely recognized as the most successful bike race in the entire United States. And this year, Santa Clarita was fortunate enough to have the race finish here on a Saturday and then start again for the final day on Sunday. And we had people all throughout the state, and really, all throughout the world, come to Santa Clarita, watch the bike race, and stay in our hotels, eat in our restaurants, and spend money in Santa Clarita, and then leave.
That's what I'm talking about. That's what we like. Come visit, spend your money, and truck on home.
It was a very successful event, much like the AT&amp;T Golf Classic. Again, where it's one of the big golf tournaments in the country with popular golfers that come into Santa Clarita. We have a Pro-Am where local golfers or duffers are able to team up with these pros and just have a tremendous time. And they raise thousands and thousands of dollars for charity. And again, it's an opportunity for people who live in Santa Clarita to stay right here in Santa Clarita and see something that they're used to being able to see only on TV, where they have these golfers that they've watched literally for decades golfing right here in their backyard. So that's something we're real happy about. Gail, it's getting to be that time of year for Farmer's Market to start up. What do you know about that?
The Farmer's Market? Well, we have a couple of different Farmer's Markets. There is one at College of the Canyons, and that is a certified Farmer's Market. Goes on on Sunday. It's been going on for a long time. This is a different one. This is sponsored by the city. This Farmer's Market is on Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00, and it happens in Old Town New Hall. In years past, it has happened right across from the Canyon Theater. This year, we're moving it to Market, and we brought in a new partner, and that is Whole Foods. And we're really, really excited about bringing in Whole Foods and having them be a part of our Farmer's Market and offering something of that caliber to our residents and to Old Town New Hall. As you know, Ken, we spend a lot of time, energy, money on bringing Old New Hall notoriety recognition, guests, people that want to visit there, residents that live around here. And this is yet another way where we can bring people to Old Town New Hall to enjoy something fun that they may not be able to get otherwise. And take a look and say, "Hey, you know, this is kind of cool. It's kind of quaint. It's up and coming." We're certainly spending a lot of time and energy in Old Town New Hall. We've got the Veterans Plaza. We've got our community center there. We've got the Janhite MetroLink Station. We've got some landscaping that's gone in this year. We're working on our Streetscape program in Old Town New Hall. So really, I think in the next year or so, and I'm sure you agree, we're going to see a lot of differences in Old Town New Hall.
Changes are coming to Old Town New Hall. There's no question about that. You know, one of the other events that will be coming up soon is Arbor Day Celebration that is going to be taking place on April 12th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Central Park up Bouquet Canyon. And the city really puts a lot of emphasis on trees. Since the city was formed, we have planted over 1,000 trees every year. And I remember right when we formed about 20 years ago... And I remember right when we formed about 20 years ago, I was thinking, 1,000 trees? That's a lot of trees. And we planted 1,000 trees, and I looked around the city and thought, well, that didn't make much of a difference. Because you think about it, there are 1,000 trees that are, you know, six, seven feet high. And now I look at those trees 20 years later, and these are giant trees that have really made a difference. And you add to that 1,000-plus trees planted every year since then, and we've really been able to make a significant difference in the overall look of Santa Clarita.
It's definitely much greener. How long have you been with the city, Ken?
Just about 20 years.
About 20 years, and I've been here 18, and I can remember starting here and seeing those itty-bitty little saplings and thinking, why the heck are we planting these itty-bitty little trees? And you're right, I was driving down the Medians today, and I noticed that they're big, they're green, they're lush, they provide shade, really a nice feeling driving down Solidad with that landscaping getting to be mature and green. And boy, that is just something that we put a lot of emphasis on, and it's definitely yielded dividends for us.
Absolutely.
I love Arbor Day too. It's a fun day. This year, we're giving out ladybugs. Did you know that?
God, you just took it away.
I'm sorry.
I was working up to that. This year, we're giving away 1,000 trees. We've got 1,000 bags of mulch.
And ladybugs.
And 150,000 ladybugs. So, I mean, every kid needs a pet ladybug and some friends.
That's not why we give them away though, for pets.
What?
No, they're not pets.
What do we do?
We don't know why we give away ladybugs?
Well, let's hear it.
Well, I was kind of hoping you knew.
No, I know. Ladybugs are very beneficial in a garden. They eat up a lot of the pests. If people have aphids, things of this sort, pests that cause problems in your yard. Ladybugs are actually very beneficial, and they're just wonderful to have crawl around in your house. The kids love them.
They do feel good. Now, you know where we get the mulch, right?
Where do we get the mulch?
Oh, I know something you don't know.
What's that?
Christmas tree recycling. We grind up all those Christmas trees that we collect, and we give them out as mulch at Arbor Day.
That's great.
News you can use right here on Channel 20.
That is good stuff.
Yeah.
That is good stuff. So what I'd like to do now, that I know people are wanting to hear more about ladybugs, but I'd like to return and give the most up-to-date information on the election results.
Good idea.
We now have all of the vote by mail ballots counted in 18 of the 32 precincts. So more than half the precincts have been counted now. In first place, we have Lori Ender with 4,475 votes. Second place, Bob Keller with 4,389 votes. Third place is Bob Spear. No, I beg your pardon. Third place is Diane Troutman with 3,536 votes. Fourth place is Bob Spear with 3,470 votes. And fifth place is Maria Gutseit with 1,867 votes. I can see the ballots continue to come in from the different precincts throughout the city, and the workers are continuing to count them, and we will continue to provide those results to you live as we receive them. And right now, we will take a quick break and come back with more election results live here at Election Central, right here in City Hall, the city of Santa Clarita.
Stay with us.